Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm gonna call tonight's city council meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the city council on a night that we don't regularly meet. So as you can see, there are things on the agenda. We don't have council items. We don't have public comment tonight. We're here to talk about two issues that the council has been asking for updates on, and so we scheduled this very specific meeting for that. With that, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Dugger?
Here.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Here.
Counselor Hassan? Okay, I have you marked as here, Nadia. Counselor Kimmy?
Here.
Counselor Teeter?
Here.
I have Counselor Tippin on his absent. Mayor Beatty?
Here. Counselor Tippin on his excused. I'm not sure how we're annotating that in there. With that, will the our consent agenda item, please?
That we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on tonight's agenda item?
I'll pop in real quick. Super excited to see all these minutes from such recent meetings. So thanks for whoever's helping make that happen.
All right, will the recorder call the roll?
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yeah.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Dugger?
Yes.
Thank you. On October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, during the regularly scheduled city council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding ordinance vacating and segment of Southwest Third Avenue between Southwest Fremont Drive and Southwest Erickson Avenue, S B three-two-zero-two-three dash zero-zero-two-five-six. Okay, our first work section of the evening is Agenda Bill two-three-two-zero-nine, event related to revenue options. City manager, we'll have your team queue up and ready to go.
Thank you, Mayor. It should be Shannon Mason that will be presenting.
I don't hear anything, just to be clear, right?
Yep.
Thanks, just to confirm.
Okay. Do things look correct to you? Are you able to see my screen?
We can.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Mayor and counselors, for having me at this meeting. As you know, my name is Shannon Mason. I'm the events program manager for the city. Tonight, I am here to talk to you about possible cost recovery options related to events. The three main focuses will be adjusting the city's contribution to city-supported events, seeking event sponsorships for citywide signature events, and possibly levying event-related fees and fines. Let's start with city-supported events. These are events that are planned by external organizations who go through an application process with the city to receive in-kind donations of staff time to help execute and promote their events. This year, we supported four events at a cost to the city of roughly twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. I'm recommending that the city limit the cost of support to a maximum of five thousand dollars and bill the event organizers for any remaining costs, which are typically for road closures. As you can see in the table, this change will only affect two of the events, the Beaverton Half Marathon and Pride Beaverton. I'd also like you to know that I've spoken to both groups, and neither would be blindsided should you choose to approve this change, and both are still likely to continue to seek city support and host their events in Beaverton. Okay, moving on to signature events. These are the large-scale annual citywide events that are organized primarily by my team and other city staff, examples being celebration parade, tree lighting, night market, Flicks by the Fountain. There are a total of fifteen signature events throughout the year, and costs range from ninety thousand dollars to five thousand dollars. And before I get into some possible cost recovery for these events, I'd like to take a minute to set the stage by giving you some examples of what those costs are. So in this graphic, I know there's a lot there, but in this graphic, I've chosen five key signature events and offer a breakdown of the base costs, which include event equipment, contracted services, marketing, printing, and other external expenses. You can also see the average cost of paid city staff to work the day of the event, the average event attendance, and the total cost for each event. Together, these five events total more than two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. As you can see, events can be expensive, and rather than cancel events, I'd like the opportunity to to explore some alternate sources of funding, which brings us to sponsorships. Currently, there are no policies, procedures, or guidelines in place for soliciting, approving, or accepting sponsorships for our events. We have received a few small sponsorships over the years for several of our events, but we could definitely benefit from an established sponsorship process before seeking more robust sponsorships in the future. And with your support, I'd like to work with relevant city staff to draft the necessary policies and procedures for your approval. Currently, let's see. Oh, so now let's look at Beaverton Celebration Parade. Currently, we don't have any fees to enter our parade, which is unusual. Parade entry fees are typically used to offset event costs, as well as decrease the number of no-shows on parade day, which would also certainly help us out. And many of our parade entries are surprised that we don't charge a fee, so I don't anticipate much pushback should we decide to do so. I've done some research on parade entry fees already, and if you're interested, I'd like to generate several recommendations for potential fee schedules for you to review. Now I'd like to switch gears a little bit and talk about fees related to special event permits. We typically grant between eighty to a hundred special event permits each year, which are required for groups who will be using city property for an event or affecting a right-of-way. So unlike most of our neighboring cities, we don't currently charge any fees related to special event permits or associated services provided by city staff, like an application fee, charges to use city properties such as City Park, The Round, the Library Lawn, or fees for city staff support like traffic management, electrical support, event day staff, barricade deliveries, or traffic control plans. That said, I'd like your approval to develop and propose fee schedules related to our special event permits. And lastly, I'd like to address fines. The city doesn't currently have any fines associated with noncompliance with a special event permit or the memorandums of understanding that we have with our city-supported event organizers. In cases of noncompliance, right now, really, our only option is to cancel the event, which is typically unwarranted, and we really don't want to do that. So I recommend that we establish potential fines as a more incremental way to approach ensuring that the terms of our agreements are met and that we have the means to right-size our response to any concerns that might arise. And that is the end of my presentation, so I can open it up to you all now for questions or clarification.
Counsel President?
Thank you, thank you, Shannon. I really do support us pursuing, setting a limit on our on our contribution to city-supported events. I do think the policy for external partnership should be created. I do support a fee. I would love to kind of see what that looks like before I say yes, but I do think it'd be great to have you go forward with a fee schedule that could come back to us. I don't want fees to be a deterrent for participation, because I think a lot of people have fun with it, whether you're participating or you're viewing. So I love that our parade is pretty, like, well-attended, and, you know, it's a long parade, so I do think fee for participation would be great, though, because just the logistics and coordination of it all and deterring no-shows would be great. So my essentially yes to all of your questions, Shannon.
Right.
Counselor Teeter?
Yeah, thanks, Shannon. I will second a lot of what Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg just said. Many of you, or those of you here know, and maybe some of the participants or attendees know, I used to plan events that would happen in downtown Beaverton with the Beaverton Downtown Association, and we'd have a good amount of staff support for those, whether it was day of or planning it, and that was all really great. I do think it would be fair to expect, if I was doing that, to have to pay some sort of fee to get added support from the city. So I would support some fees and sponsorship reductions. I think what would help me be even more comfortable with it is if part of that permitting process, it can be very clear about what those costs are. But if if there are street closures, if we've got, like, a designated parade route where people don't have to put in a ton of time to plan their whole route, but we've got a plan that they can just easily implement themselves. And then if we can reduce some of the day of staff time, like, like with our police who show up, and instead use certain volunteers. I think we ask our police to do a whole lot, and I think we can cut some costs if we're able to let them focus on more police activity than than event management. Then my final comment is just overall related to events. As we keep going forward with some of these steps and some of our event funding and budgeting, I think it could be really helpful if we're able to create a prioritization matrix like we do for the capital improvement program, so that if we get to the point where we're deciding which events to keep or add, we're able to weigh them with what is in line with council goals and our budget availability. That might be a next step for in the future, but as we are right now, I think I would support these steps that you're recommending, Shannon.
Thank you.
Counsel Dugger?
Thanks. I'm struggling a little bit with this one. And I think it's because I've done a lot of these events myself. And I can tell you, we get a lot of bang for our buck. I do, I do have some of the same questions that Counselor Teeter has and Counsel President made about, you know, we need, we do need to capture some money, for sure, right? Like, we shouldn't be subsidizing everything, but I struggle a little bit again, because, you know, you all know, I'm a co-founder of Pride, and like, that's a lot of, I know that private organization does a lot of good for our city, for the businesses, for the the community. I look at the night market and I see the same thing. I look at the parade. I mean, a lot of people, a lot of businesses, a lot of residents get joy. We've asked a lot of them this year. We've raised their property taxes, their water and sewer rates continually go up. All of these things, like, I'm struggling a little bit, because I don't want to take away joy from our residents, and some of these things bring a lot of joy. I can tell you, there are some things that are very hard lines for me, like the holiday celebration. I, that can never end, it can never, you know, like, we have to think about, like, families and particularly, I look at this from an equity lens, too. We have a lot of folks that free events are some of the only entertainment they can get to, and I think that's really important for us to consider. Like, Beaverton-focused events for Beaverton residents that are really cost-effective. And I'm afraid if we go too far in the the fee capture and we make it difficult, some of these events, we've already seen the Chalk Festival is not in downtown Beaverton anymore, right? We've already seen some things leave, and I'm really, want to be really careful. I'm open to some fees, but it has to be incredibly reasonable, and I also want us to take the lens of, like, for especially these outside organizations that are doing the work, for us, a minimal contribution, like, for the amount of value we get for things like Pride and whatnot for that contribution, should we cut some of it? Sure. But we get way more than even fifteen thousand dollars worth of value in events like that. And I think we've got to be really careful, because we're asking, again, a lot of our community, we've asked them to contribute a lot, and we cannot just say, pay more, and you get less joy. And that's what, that's what's giving me pause here. I'm open to the idea, but it has to be really, really careful. That's it. Thanks.
Yeah.
Counsel Hassan?
Yeah, I'm kind of feeling special. I got to go after Counselor Dugger, because I have similar, like, I support, you know, yes, we need to look at a fee schedule. Yes, I'm supportive of the five thousand. Yes, we need to create a policy. But there are some events that are truly free to our community that do not generate their own revenue, and these are community-based organizations that are working really hard out of their time, money, energy, and so I guess my ask, as you're building this policy, Shannon, and staff, is 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 there a prioritization process and/or a or a matrix that can be used as you're building this that acknowledges events that are free can get more funding and/or some sort of, some sort of methodology that says Pride allows everyone to attend for free. It's an amazing event. It brings incredible joy. And so is there, is there a different matrix of of what we're comping, whereas, and, you know, I participated in the five K and Sam Day, and they're great events, and I don't want them to go away, but they are charging for participation, and so is there the the ability to potentially have a different system for them? The only other thing I would add is, I think a lot of our city-supported events are, from what I'm seeing, they are a little bit more I'm just gonna say it, like, white-centered, and so, like, are we making sure that we're talking with community-based organizations or other partners, or does that fall in other places? So I hope that if we're doing a maximum city contribution to city-supported events at five thousand, that that is open to any and all organizations that maybe haven't traditionally been accessing this funding in the past. I'm super excited for a policy. I think I've given some direction on what I'd like to see around a fee schedule. I do think it's important that we're thinking, again, of, like, organizations that are doing a lot of work upfront for us to put on these events. I'm gonna say the unpopular thing. I think that if the celebration parade was gone, I'd be okay, but I acknowledge that that might not be super popular, so said what I said. I would say the same without tree lighting, but those are my unpopular perspectives. But I think that just, I hope I've given you, Shannon, a little bit of direction, like, I I love all of this. I think this is important work that we want to do. I just hope, as you're doing it, that we acknowledge that we've uplifted some organizations more than others, and that there are newer, more fresher ones coming, and that I'd like to make sure we're not, I don't want to say punishing them, but not giving them an opportunity to participate, because they haven't been our peckers in the past. Does that help?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah.
Counsel Kimmy?
Yes. I am for capturing some of the costs that we're spending on these events. I love more events, but either times are tough. But I have a question where, is it any possibility to subcontract it out to outside organization and let them run it, and maybe we can save some money? And I would, I would like for us to look into that, like, night market and other other ways where, if we're gonna continue, and there's a staff changes all the time, then maybe we should look into contracting it out to some other organization to run, run it, and we oversee it. If it's gonna cost, save us some cost. Number one. Number two is fee schedule where, I think for small community organizations, it should be treated a little differently than the for-profit organizations. So maybe I'd love to see a different fee schedule for different organizations. I think THPRD has some tiered tiered fee schedule for nonprofits, community organization, or privately rental. So, and even other government agencies, so maybe we should look into that to have a creative fee schedule that could be equitable for whomever who wants to rent the space or run an event. And that is my input. Thank you.
I appreciate, John, that you said, sorry, because you're coming in again, because I do hope that our council starts to form your ideas. This isn't designed to be a back-and-forth and quid pro quo amongst each other. We're giving staff direction in a work session, and so I'm going to allow it today, but we need to start working on this and exercising our behavior, or exercising what we want. There's seven of us. These meetings are becoming incredibly long, and we're starting to develop the habit of going back and quid pro quo in every point of every other elected official, and that is not what a work session is designed to do. So with that, go ahead, Counsel Dugger.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not gonna talk about other people. I just forgot to give input, two inputs. On, number one, I'm, I'm against fines. That doesn't signal the right thing to me. To me, these are based on relationships with organizations, and like, if I have the the possibility to even find, I'm not gonna trust you. Like, I'm gonna always question everything, so I think we've got to rethink that. Then the second, the other one is sponsorships. I forgot to mention that. I'm highly, highly, highly supportive of that. I think we have a large corporate base, and I really would encourage us to go e- even if none of the other things happen, like, that should be happening, because anytime we can get companies to pay for some of this stuff, some of the support, some of the operations, we should definitely do that. So those are the only points I wanted to make.
Counsel Hassan?
Sure, thanks. And respectfully, I hear you, Mayor. I think sometimes when I hear other counselors, I, I'm like, oh, right, and so I do, I want to honor that sometimes we, I love listening to you all talk, and then it helps me. Counsel Kimmy mentioned THPRD, and I think you know this, Shannon, but I just wanted to make sure, like, are, how are we partnering with them on events? Like, is there, I'm sure this is already happening, but just thinking holistically on, like, how we're doing those things. I just wanted to make sure I said that for the record. Thanks. Thank you.
I can withdraw. People have said what I was gonna say again, so thanks.
Thank you. Shannon, thank you for tonight's presentations. A couple of my thoughts. I am apprehensive of wanting to put a cap on city-supported events. I think Counsel Dugger made a lot of similar comments of where I'm at. I will tell you, council, events used to be the thing of the city. We are squabbling now over eight or nine events. We used to run twenty or thirty a year. And it's really what makes Beaverton special. It's a lot of what a lot of us engaged in in our early time on boards and commissions, whether it was on the Vision or on the Bike Advisory Committee. It's a lot of what draws people in, the night market, the Pride Parade, Beaverton Celebration Parade. We don't even do hardly any picnics in the park anymore. We don't do last Thursday arts, or last Thursday concerts at City Hall, where we're hardly doing any events. And so I want us to take that into perspective of what we actually are doing. And so we're talking about trying to shave down, and already shaved down, shaved-down list of things that make our community great. I grew up incredibly poor. Going to events like this in cities were some of the only entertainment that I ever had. I remember vividly going with, to the San Diego Fair, which cost to go in. It was the, it's the big thing to do in San Diego, and pressuring my mom to buy us lunch, and I was too young to understand poverty. I was too young to understand what I was asking my mom in that moment. I've thought about that moment probably fifteen times since I've been a parent, and how it had to kill my mom to turn around and tell us that she couldn't afford to do X, Y, or Z. Similar things happen at the night market. Similar things are happening at events that we're putting on. This is a council of immense privilege financially, and so I want us to really think hard when we're talking about what makes Beaverton so awesome that we're starting to limit what we're doing there. So nixing a lot of free events is challenging for me. The things like the Sam Day five K, they're charging for events, but it's for childhood research and cancer. The Rotary is doing Rotary, and so I do think, I hear you on the fact that they're, they're, they are raising funds, but there's only so much people are willing to pay. And so I do really like Kevin or Counselor Teeter's idea on, like, some set maps. Are there ways for us to streamline some of these events? A lot of people want to do five K races. A lot of people want to have parades. Do we have our set route that we know closes less roads, that requires less overtime of police officers, that here's the package and what you need to do to make things go forward? People love our tree lighting. My family's one of them. I would be very heartbroken if we moved away from it. We're starting to include, you know, other events. We have the menorah lighting and other representation there, but those lights stay up the entire month. We get a lot of bang for our buck when we're doing that. I've continued to ask us to have a deeper conversation with THPRD. The people in our community have no idea who is this, who is running events, whether it's us, whether it's THPRD, whether it's the school district. I do think a summit of our staff to go over events collectively over the the city is important for us to have that conversation. Are there ways that we could give THPRD five grand and match funds they're doing and have a really great event? And that really, it explodes what we're able to do in a way, like a force multiplier that makes a lot of sense to me. I understand times are tough. Our budget is incredibly challenging. I understand why we're having this conversation. However, there needs to be enjoyment in our community, and when we start stripping away all the awesome things, like, then it's just routine business and government, and I, that's not why people choose to live here. So I would support some fee structure around the parade. I get it if we're charging. The other thing that I want to caution us, we could go out and make a policy about supporting events, but that requires staff to go out and seek sponsorship. And does that exist now? Does Shannon have? You don't have to answer. I'm just saying this out loud, so you can come back. Does Shannon have the capacity? Nonprofit organizations have entire foundation teams that do nothing but this work that speaks sponsorship. And then we have to have a value add. What's the value add? Just because there's businesses here doesn't mean they're willing to write a check to sponsor our events. And so I don't see that as the, the golden solution to our problem. I'm comfortable continuing to have this conversation, but times are hard, not just for us. Times are hard for businesses, too, and we have to make sure what we're doing. So I understand we're having this conversation. My hope would be we would continue some of the things that make Beaverton great. And if we can't financially contribute, are there other things? Space? Can we create the avenues for other events to happen? And what's our force multiplier? So I think you have a lot of opinions tonight. Good luck, staff, on deciphering what you're gonna come back to us with. City manager, is there any clarifying things you need from the council?
I, no clarifying things that I need from the council, but just to let the council know. So part of this is taking a temperature check, a little bit of a mixed bag. But what we will be doing is coming back as a part of our fee study that we're now conducting now. So there'll be a variety of fees, either new or updated fees. We'll have a separate meeting work session to discuss it, and you will see fees related to events, so you'll have another bite at the apple, another discussion where you can weigh in and determine whether you are more comfortable having a higher level of subsidy or or something, not so much of that. And so I just want you to understand the process moving forward is that we do have a comprehensive fee study city-wide. This is just one component of many fees that'll be presented to you this spring, so I hope that that's helpful.
No, I don't want to have a conversation about how we're gonna have lots of more fees around the city, but I get what you're saying. So thank you for bringing us this information tonight. I hope what you got, what you needed. My last hope would be that we have a serious conversation with THPRD while you guys are coming back to us to help us if there's an off-ramp, and if we can get more things done with our partnership. So. All right, with that, we're on to our next work session of the evening, Agenda Bill two-three-two-one-zero, multicultural center project update. I do think Cia's here tonight, and Kenya, your first presentation to our council, so thank you for being with us tonight, and good luck.
Thank you, Mayor Beatty, Council. Good evening. Good to see you this evening. Kenya and I are here tonight to provide you with an update on the multicultural center project. And this was a request that your council made of the city manager last year, as you well, or earlier this year, as you well, were considering your priorities. You asked for an update on this project. We're also gonna use it as an opportunity to discuss with you some of the foundational pieces of this project, and this will be a chance for you to engage with Kenya Williams as our new inclusion manager. So let's see, next slide, please. So here are the topics we're gonna cover in more detail. I'm gonna give you a quick background. Some of you have lived this background, so I will be giving you a background that I haven't actually lived, but many of you have, and so I'll do that, run through that quickly for you. We're then gonna talk a little bit about the problem statement for this project, and you'll remember from the Bloomberg Harvard work we did a little earlier, and I know this is something many of you do in your lives, in your professional lives, that starting with a good understanding of the problem is essential for us to arrive at a good solution. So we're gonna spend a little time talking about the problem statement on this project, and then roll into our problem approach before we do next steps for council consideration. We will have some council policy questions at the end of this as well. So next slide. So here's the background. In two thousand nine, there was a multicultural leadership forum, and this was the first time that, at least according to the records, the first time that the concept of the multicultural center first came of the multicultural center uh, first came to fruition. Then in two thousand eleven, uh, the city completed a feasibility study on the concept. And this was conducted by Delta Studios, the Center for Intercultural Organizing, which is now Unite Oregon, and uh, Barry R. Smith Architects. Then in twenty fifteen, the project was incorporated into the DEI plan for the first time. And um, again, uh, uh, in twenty nineteen, it was incorporated again in the DEI plan during that update process. In uh, twenty twenty-two, it was then elevated as a council strategic priority. And you've also included it in your priorities for twenty twenty-three. Uh, last year, you also got a work session update. Uh, June twenty-first was when that update happened. Um, and then as you were putting together your priorities uh, for twenty twenty-three, you uh, directed the city manager to uh, conduct a needs assessment, or what we're currently kind of calling a gaps analysis for this project. And we'll talk a little bit more about that uh, further in the conversation. Next slide. So we're gonna start with uh, the problem statement. And again, this is just a kind of foundational uh, discussion to make sure that we are all um, talking about the same kind of problem that we're trying to solve. What is the problem we're trying to solve for this project? Um, and Kenya and I drafted this uh, together. Um, we uh, read a lot of the background materials, had some conversations. Um, and based on those, pulled these statements together. And we'd like your feedback on whether we are hitting the mark on this problem statement or not. So first, immigrants, refugees, and other communities facing inequities should experience a sense of belonging and connectedness in Beaverton. Um, and that there there are a couple of barriers to this outcome. Um, first, social services are fragmented and difficult to navigate. Um, and so there's a lot around connectedness to services to help foster that sense of security engagement, community belonging. So that's the first piece of it, is this social service fragmentation and connectedness. The second is around community opportunities to gather, share information, and access resources. And this is about having community gathering. Um, and we're heard, we've heard quite a bit about um, making sure that it has opportunities to share food together, kitchen facilities, those kinds of things. But this idea of of community gathering space. So those are the two pieces on the problem statement um, that we heard the most about. And just wanna pause here and see if you all have any immediate feedback on this problem statement before we get into uh, um, into the next step of this.
Can I ask a quick question, uh, Sia? This is a little bit different than what's in your agenda bill, which is the truth.
Uh, so I think the the difference, which is the truth. So I think the difference is probably that barriers section there. I think that's the thing that just got inserted for uh, formatting purposes. So otherwise, I think the language should be the same. Yeah, thank you for asking that.
Counselor Teeter. Oh, I'm sorry, we, that is old. Um, I would just, yeah, sorry. Um, I would just say the only I like the opening one. I said, other communities leaves me continually, even as you were talking, wondering what you mean by other communities.
So we just need to do a better job of defining what other communities are?
I think so. That seems like overtly vague to me. And if we're, if we're calling out immigrant and refugees, is that like other communities seems like it's lumping way too many things together.
Yeah, and I think the, and Kenya, I'd invite you to chime in on this. I think the idea here was that we um, wanted to make it inclusive of all communities who are facing inequities. We heard that uh, as a pretty broad um, piece that we were trying to include. Um, and Mayor, I think what I'm hearing from you is we didn't quite hit the mark on that in terms of defining communities facing inequities. Am I getting that that feedback correct?
I mean, that's my opinion. Counselor Hustin.
Uh, well, unrelated to that comment, I mean, I hear the mayor there. Um, while I think sense of belonging and connectedness is big, I also think there's an economic justice issue that's not being addressed in this problem statement. Like, we know, I don't know what the Portland data is, but like, you know, women or women of color make X amount of money on the dollar to um, white, white men, for example. And so there is an economic justice piece that I'd like to see thrown in here at some point in some way.
Thank you. What else, y'all? Either pieces that are missing or pieces that you just think shouldn't be there at all? Because we need to make sure, um, for what it's worth, I'm also looking to see whether this resonates at all. Because if this statement doesn't resonate, we need to go back to the drawing board on the problem statement. So I'll take, I'll take any of that feedback I can get. Are we hitting it even vaguely?
I I guess what what I'm struggling with in answering your question, it's like, I still feel like in my core, I don't know. You know, when I see immigrant refugees, this starts to feel like Erko. A lot of our conversations have been a little bit of other things. And so to me, I I guess this statement looks really good. But what what are we trying to solve? Like, do, and without the gap analysis, it's hard for me to like, then come back and say if this is the right statement to get out there. So I'm I'm just struggling with, that I still feel like we don't fully know what we are looking at. And so I get that this, this is what you're trying to do to do that. But I think when we start identifying these things that we perceive without the gap analysis, it's just hard for me. Counselor Duggar?
I think directionally, I'm a little confused, but I'm okay with with advancing. The only thing I would suggest, and I don't know if this is a problem statement, but um, I think about, well, like the mayor's point in the last, uh, the last section we were talking about, right? Like people of Beaverton have multi-layers of government. We have THPRD, we have the school district. We have a number of different communities. Uh, if we're just talking about a multicultural center to serve the city of Beaverton, that feels like a miss to me. Because a lot of our multicultural populations are in Aloha and in areas that are covered by THPRD and and whatnot. So I'm wondering if in our problem statement, we need to address that this problem exists beyond Beaverton. And it's sort of the Beaverton Service Area. And because I'm I'm really interested in partnerships too. If we get to like solving this problem, is this doesn't feel like a problem unique to Beaverton. It feels like our whole area could work together for this, but I I'm not quite sure if that belongs in the problem statement. It's just kind of where my mind is going. Um, I don't know if that's helpful or like, if it's not helpful, you can just toss it, but it just feels like a, the problem scope is beyond Beaverton too. And I guess that's why I'm like, does that belong in the problem statement?
And that's actually kind of a key question for us about whether we should be looking within our borders or extending potentially collaboratively beyond. That's a good key question.
Is I, the, like a worst-case scenario to me is if this all works out, and then like an Aloha resident shows up and we have to charge them, right? Like, that doesn't feel very inclusive to me. But that's fiscally responsible for the residents of Beaverton who would pay for this. That's why I think it it's better for us to look bigger and serve all of our immigrant and refugee and and uh, those, you know, diminished or discriminated against communities, right? Like, like, I don't know, just just where my brain is. I I don't know if that makes sense.
Counselor Kimmy.
Yeah, I I think uh, the problem statement on the agenda, if you read it whole, it's more digestible than what's on the slideshow. I think it's kind of confusing. So I think you made it kind of worse by writing them up. Yeah, so I I I think captures it all. Uh, and other communities, I think, is trying to be more inclusive. We don't want to leave anybody out, but if you start singling out and and trying to figure out what on the other equities or population that we're missing, then it, the list will never end. So uh, so I I like it so far, and I love to hear what's on the agenda further down.
Counselor Hustin.
Uh, I I mean, I was, I was gonna say if it would make people feel, like folks feel better, I think you could call it communities of color face inequities in Beaverton and should experience, and deserve to have economic, I don't know, empowerment or economic support, along with a sense of belonging and connectedness in Beaverton. If I were to try to help give some feedback based on what I'm hearing from the group.
I guess my question is, in the other communities aspect, like the LGBTQI community that's also asking us for space that are also historically marginalized, how do they fit into that statement?
Are, are you asking me? Are you asking the staff?
Well, I don't, I'm, I guess I'm kind of asking you because the staff can't answer that. I'm just like, that feels way more single-focused to me than what, and I, and I guess that's a question for the council for us to consider. Is this a predominant space for people of color, or are we saying other communities and intentionally meaning other communities?
I would, my opinion, um, I think that the goal is to be as inclusive as possible by but by but potentially prioritizing people of color, right? Like, we know that like racial equity is different than um, other factors, but one hundred percent, the, when I see other communities in this problem statement, I do think of the LGBTQIA population as the other community. And maybe we're just not naming it, and maybe that's what we need to do that helps bring this along. I just think that from a, again, like that racial justice lens, like I, um, you know, this is the color, I can't change it. Whereas I think different, like different identities, like I think that that racial piece is is more complicated than anything else. It's like we're moving forward.
Have we made it through the comments for now?
Uh, I have one. Um, I I think I tend to agree with Counselor Kimmy that I I think this, by breaking it out, it feels a bit more confusing. The bold statement at the top feels more like a a vision, right? And that's not really part of a problem statement. The problem is that immigrants, refugees, and other communities that face inequities do not experience a sense of belonging and connectedness in Beaverton. Right? And so I think that if we're really defining a problem statement, like I feel like I am so in the weeds with you right now, and I should not be here, but uh, I definitely think that it's causing confusion to me to read it this way. Um, I think that we know that when we reduce, like, lots of diverse people into like a term like person of color, right? That it's really, then it becomes not representative. We don't have like a great way of saying like all these different populations that we're trying to serve here. So I appreciate the attempt at including other like, um, intersectional people who face inequities in Beaverton. So I think that that's fine, but I would be curious, like when we get to the what, right? This is the kind of why, but when you get to the what, what are we trying to create a space for? And if it is, like, I tend to agree with Counselor Hustin, though, like, I think everyone should be welcome here. But we should be designing pieces that are intentionally calling in and taking care of specific audiences that may need support. So the needs of an immigrant or refugee may be very different than the need of, you know, uh, transgender youth who needs a place for community, right? So I think that then the programming is the piece that comes in to say, we're designing place for communities that have, you know, that thing in common, that like, what a community is, right? Like, if you go to, its definition, right? Community is like things, something we have in common. So um, I definitely think we should consider that, but in terms of problem statement, I think we just need to identify that, hey, there there are folks in our community who face inequity and do not feel that they belong or connect to Beaverton. That's a problem that we're trying to solve.
Okay, um, so I think I'm uh, I'm gonna try to do a quick summary before we go on to our problem approach here, and then we'll get a little bit more feedback. But um, I did hear that we need to do a whole lot more refining around um, the communities that we're here to serve. I think I heard an expansion around um, making sure that we consider communities, immigrant refugee, communities of color, LGBTQ, the intersectionality of that. Um, and I heard some centering around um, communities of color in particular. So um, I also clearly heard about um, the gaps analysis will help us inform that. Um, and so hopefully, we'll we'll do our best to pull all those uh, pieces together. I did hear a little bit around the geography as well, and um, unless there's uh, any objection to that, we'll take that as invitational, that we look at the possibility of partnerships um, more broadly. Um, so um, is there anything there that um, in what I just summarized that gives anybody heartthrombs? Before we go on to the next one?
Um, so yeah, before we move on to the next one, I'd like to, like to have an ask of uh, council. Also, as an exercise to, let's define uh, multiculturalism. Uh, and what does that mean? Um, uh, for the city of Beaverton? Also, uh, when we talk about, you know, other communities, uh, I think we need to have a serious conversation about the communities that we want to center. And and I think, um, you know, through some exercises, we'll get to that and we'll be able to make some data-informed decisions um, based on who, you know, who who are, you know, what residents are experiencing those disparities and inequities. And I think, um, you know, this is a a little shot in the dark right now, because we don't necessarily have that. And uh, the hopes as we will get to in this presentation, um, that's, that's one of the outcomes that we're hoping for um, by conducting uh, the gap analysis.
Kenya, thank you for that. We'll add to the list the conversation about defining multiculturalism. Okay, so problem approach. Um, this is the next piece then connected to um, that problem statement. Um, and again, uh, it's uh, I'm gonna read from the A B this time, just to make sure that I've got the formatting correctly here. Um, but this is to consider opportunities for community gatherings and access to services. Again, those two pieces that we've been hearing is kind of what we're hinging this on. Um, so that the problem approach would consider both community meeting space and access to services. Those kind of two sides um, of the problem statement that that we approached. And this obviously could get refined as we really refine the um, communities that we're here to serve for this. Um, any immediate feedback on on these two pieces?
Counselor Hustin.
Uh, my name was there from before, but I'll just drop this for everyone. Like, from a DEI lens, like typically, we use the word historically excluded communities. That's just a way to identify those socioeconomic status, LGBTQI, immigrants, refugees. I think DEI communities are still trying to identify what words and language they feel is is using. And we also still have to define more specifically who these groups are. Um, but just from a D I lens, that's something that's often done. Um, I I love this. Um, I think I don't know if order matters, but to me, access to services is like the first one, and community meeting spaces the second. That's just a small piece that I wanted to call out for you. Thanks.
Counselor Kimmy.
Yeah, so regards to access to services, I'd love to see an economic prosperity or or opportunity uh, that Counselor Hassan has mentioned, because um, that's what I'm hoping for. The facility or services will be used and create a business uh, and possibly give them opportunity for economic prosperity. So somehow we can add that into it. That'd be great.
Counselor Teeter.
The first part of my comment was gonna share exactly what Counselor Kimmy just shared about including economic opportunity here. Um, or entrepreneurs that support, something like that. Um, the second comment I want to make is related to a spot where I'm really struggling with the framing of this conversation. So the problem statement felt like it was centering the city and the government as being in the leadership position. And in some ways we are, and then this problem approach, um, feels like it centers more as a community organization. And where my head is at, and maybe this will continue to evolve as we move forward with this, I want this to be led and guided and directed as much by the community as it possibly can, as it can possibly be. Um, because I think the community will will know what they need and can can help experiment and lead some of this. And if we, as the government, can provide the support behind them, I think that would be great. Um, now again, my thinking may shift as we figure out how we can access resources to keep this moving along. Um, but I think that's just an area where I'm kind of struggling as I think through this.
Counselor President?
Thank you. I think like my thinking Counselor Teeter, when you're saying that too, though, is like, I think for me, it is a this conversation is definitely indicative for me of like wanting that gap analysis. But the other piece Counselor Teeter is then I question, and this is, it's just because you said the thing that triggered my thought um, that I'm addressing you now. Um, I'm, I'm so curious, like what is our city's role in this? And I think we have kind of touched on this, like maybe at our last retreat. But part of me is like, okay, like the city is not everyone's everything. Like we do know that the city has a specific role to play in terms of the services that we offer. And now granted, I will say that certain community organizations and nonprofits have had to come up perhaps due to the failing of various levels of government to provide the things that the people need, right? So there's like a bigger social commentary here, but I also think like, well, what is our role as a city in this space? And so that's why I think like getting our gap and I'm gonna mix up the words. Gap analysis and needs assessment done, because I think for me, that's gonna give me a lot of clarity around what is our community need? And then we can say as like council, what is our role as a city to play? And for example, when I see some of these services, I know that there are a lot of organizations that provide these services and so is our role as a city becomes the um, air traffic controller and says come into our space and provide these services, right? So I think like, that's kind of like where I'm thinking is I think the approach makes sense, but I definitely think I need those other like deeper analysis into what is needed so that we can say what our role as a city is. And if I'm being too wishy washy, like feel free to, to call me on that. I think I just feel like I just, I don't like to be the one, like I don't have enough information to make a decision, but I do feel here that I'm struggling with what is our role as a city? And the need that our community has.
If we get through everyone's comments on this one, yes, thank you. Um, okay, so on this one, I think um, I heard uh, reversing the order um, that we both for this one on the last slide, pulling in um, some pieces around economic prosperity or opportunity. Um, and then the conversation on the role was interesting. Um, and I think you may be right about the, just the order of this, we gotta get the gaps analysis done and then that'll help, help define that. But I know there's been conversation about that as well. So, um, okay, next slide, please. Okay, Kenya, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you so much, Cia. So over the last few months, um, we've been exploring ways to initiate a request for proposals uh, to conduct a gap analysis. And I just want to give you a little background on the expectations of, of the gap analysis and what um, it will encompass. And those things are um, an evaluation of the existing resources. Um, but also a needs assessment through community engagement. And also um, looking at um, resource navigation difficulties. I, I think what's important, as, as you saw on the um, um, previous slide is also a review of the availability and the affordability of uh, community spaces. But also looking at um, other successful models um, from this region and also around the nation. And um, also important is stakeholder engagement. And also a review of um, legal and regulatory uh, con- constraints. Um, the expected um, outcomes uh, would include, you know, just a, a co- a, a comprehensive understanding of, of what gaps uh, exist, but also uh, what is that specific community need? But also um, that could lend to uh, how do we uh, remove or mitigate uh, barriers? But I also think um, the engagement of the stakeholders and really identifying the stakeholders. Um, that, that is one of uh, the important expected outcomes of the gap analysis. And um, we expect uh, the gap analysis will take around uh, six to nine months um, to complete. So we, as you all know, we have seventy-five thousand dollars in Aqua funds and um, there's some, some other considerations that, you know, we presented, you know, it's also in the agenda bill, but um, council may want to explore ways um, to um, look at uh, ways of developing the potential uh, community gathering space. Um, and also that um, that one shop stop for services uh, for um, those uh, yet to be identified communities, but also uh, our refugee and immigrant communities. Uh, so for that um, community meeting space, one consideration is to develop a multi uh, cultural center uh, vision plan in, in partnership with um, the School of Urban Studies and Planning at Portland State University. And if council is interested in this um, vision plan concept, it's, it's definitely recommended that the gap analysis be completed um, before um, moving forward. Another consideration is to pursue um, an access to service program uh, to support the needs of those uh, yet to be identified communities and our immigrant refugee populations. And if council is interested in exploring this option, it's recommended that um, we develop, you know, um, a, a detailed uh, service scope outlining, uh, outlining what funding and also other options uh, for short-term navigator pilot program. Um, I'll move on to the next slide. Um, and a pause also uh, to see if there's any questions or feedback on that.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yeah, so I have some questions. Um, when you say community engagement, um, I shared this many times before in our council session or work session where um, I'm concerned with over tapping the community. But not only for this project, for, for all the other projects that we've been pursuing. And the uh, council goals that we have upcoming, we've already asked about an MCC and we've talked about it within the community for years over a decade. And a lot of feedback I get that they're tired. Um, they, they've been waiting for such a long time. Uh, but also we have other projects coming along. Um, uh, and everyone wants marginalized people's, communities of colors opinion, even Washington County and other areas. And, and so can you tell me how you're not going to oversaturate uh, our community? When you go back and trying to get the gap analysis or needs assessment uh, that they have been talking to us about over a decade, over and over again?
Yeah, I think that's a really interesting question. I appreciate it. Um, I also want to bring this to uh, surface, you know, our population has changed, you know, this started twenty, twenty oh nine, you know, we also have to consider the folks who have yet to speak or you have yet to give uh, their opinion or feedback on this. Um, you know, it's really hard to say, you know, who we're taxing because, you know, we don't know. Uh, I think that has to be surfaced in a uh, community engagement strategy. Who we're gonna target. Um, I think it's also important to um, ask community partners or if, you know, they're willing to share data. You know, so that could possibly alleviate, you know, some of that stress uh, if that data is helpful to this process. Um, I think, I think that's really important. Um, I also want to say that um, when we talk about community engagement, um, there's no way around it. I mean, I, there's just no way we're gonna do any type of process and, and uh, leave out that step. Um, you know, I think, I think there would be um, um, more scrutiny uh, trying to attempt something um, for the community without asking the community. So uh, so I think, you know, if, if community is taxed, uh, community is tired. Um, we have to take that into consideration, but I, I would hope that whoever um, you know, within this RFP process uh, within that scope of work, that's a potential question uh, that we can also uh, ask um, any, you know, anyone app- applying for this RFP. Um, how, how will they, you know, rightfully engage our community so that our community no longer feels, you know, that stress of being um, asked questions over and over?
Nice to continue with those questions?
Sure.
Okay. Um, uh, Counselor Teeter have mentioned something about our role in this thing where um, there are in two thousand nine, when this was initially conducted, uh, I was part of, I was in that room in the library with hundreds of other people. And the consensus was that we needed a space. So then city put up the money to come up with feasibility study, which included research center and multicultural center. But dur- but during the conversation leading up to our building and architecture design, multicultural center was left out of the conversation. And that's where most of the, my communities were upset. And I'm using upset, but it's beyond that actually. So when the design first ev- was revealed at, at the research, I was there. And I pointed out the fact that where's the kitchen and where's the gathering space? And they said it was left out because of, it was gonna cost some mu- so much money to put in a kitchen or gathering space. So from that point on, um, there's hesitation to uh, to, to give a feedback to the city. Uh, and you will see the reasons why. So then we're starting back again from the very beginning. Right? Trying to find out what's going on. And but then one thing that's, that's good is there's many other uh, community organizations that have popped up in Beaverton and surrounding area who servicing uh, immigrant refugee and minority communities and people who's in need. So if they're, they're, they're organizations already engaged, there are organizations who's doing everyday work with these communities who's in need, they know what the needs are, and they already built a relationship. Uh, and my thinking is with uh, Counselor Teeter where maybe um, we should partner up with the community organization from the beginning to do all the feasibility or not feasibility, but needs assessment or gap analysis. And be a part and be, be a partner and will bring them as our partners uh, from the beginning to put this work. Because they have lived and conducted and also serviced this community for last decade. Uh, and I would like to hear what, what are your thoughts on that? And um, I'll just wait for the people.
Yeah, my thoughts on that is um, that initial study uh, was very site-specific. Um, it didn't um, really go into much detail about services, didn't go into much detail about um, specific populations. Um, it didn't provide much data. Um, and I think the gap analysis will do that. Um, I think also the gap analysis will um, really inform us on who those uh, community-based organizations are. And again, I think in the design of an RFP, that could be part of the scope of work uh, for us to um, define um, what information we need and um, fi- figure out and find out who who's uh, supporting what communities and what communities are out there. Um, I think one of the biggest questions in that also is capacity. You know, who, who actually has the capacity? Uh, what community organizations actually have the capacity to take on? Um, you know, an RFP of a, of a gap analysis. Um, so I think, I think all of that has to be considered.
Counselor Duggar?
Um, so as far as next steps, um, I'm gonna come back to the partnership thing because I think that's really important to me as I was kind of thinking about this and researching and um, I'll give an example, like Portland School District uh, has a multicultural center. And I'm pretty sure that Portland School District is no more diverse than the Beaverton School District. I would put our, our need, you know, for, you know, if there's a need in Portland schools for a multicultural center, there's probably a need for, in Beaverton. So th- that's one example, right? I think you could talk to the Parks District, but like, it feels like that's a necessary next step. Is to, to, is we identify as like, there are children of immigrants, there are people that need these services too. And I think um, I think our chances of getting this across the line in, for, for an actual working center, that, that's doing all the things we want, we know our fiscal situation, right? Like, I think, I think our p- uh, a partnership, a centered approach is our best shot at getting this something actionable in, in a reasonable amount of time. And I just, like, maybe that's implied in the needs analysis or the, or needs assessment, the gap analysis that we'll go and do that. But if it's not, I want to make sure that we are reaching out to those partners and seeing if they, if there's a need and if they want to work with us on that, because that feels very critical to me, particularly when we ta- i- if we have that, because I'm gonna go back again, like so many of our diverse communities don't live in the city of Beaverton, they live right outside in Aloha, right? Which is part of the school district, which is part of THPRD. I don't want to exclude them. Right? We need to service all of, all of the community and the best way to do that is through a bigger tent, through a bigger partnership lens. And I think we just, we've really got to work towards including uh, some of those other layers of government in, in addition to this. I don't think it necessarily needs to slow us down. I think we can be nimble on that. Like I, I sometimes fear when you add more layers, it might slow it down, but I don't think we have to. I just think that has to be part of our next step.
Counselor Hassan?
Yeah, um, can you help me understand? I'm hearing gap analysis, needs assessment. Can you just level set me? Are those the same, different, and what do they mean?
Yeah, I think some people use um, both, but I think uh, gap analysis is needs assessment is specifically what's missing. A gap analysis is also what is there, but also give insight to how can we fill those gaps? I, I think that's a easier way um, in, in describing it. So and a part of a gap analysis, there, there is a component to uh, better understand the need. But also to uh, highlight, you know, where, where the gaps are, but where also where the opportunities are.
Okay, so I spent some time, like I reviewed the D E I plan um, from, it was just last year. Uh, and I also spent a quite a bit of time reading the downtown equity strategy. When I read those, there were so many nuggets that I, I didn't know that I saw the need for a needs analysis. Can you help me understand, like, what do you see missing in those reports? Because I, it was like downtown equity strategy, if anybody wants to read it, which I don't recommend, it's like a lot of pages of a lot of documents. And there's like several documents. So I guess like, help me understand, like, what do you feel like we're missing from those documents?
Well, I think um, when we're talking about those, all of those documents, I mean, I've read them also, um, frankly, I think we're comparing apples to oranges. Um, when we talk about a downtown equity strategy versus uh, something very specific, you know, to you know, culture and, you know, uh, what someone may need, who's facing um, you know, inequities and disparity. Um, so I want to put for it like the opportunity uh, with the gap analysis to also contribute to additional data that, you know, like you've seen in the um, downtown equity strategy and other plans. I think part of that gap analysis is gonna review that also. And also uh, glean as much uh, data as we can from those. Um, but I'm not saying that, hey, we can look at the downtown equity strategy and just say this data is gonna help us inform, you know, the creation of a multicultural center. I think that's a long shot. Um, so I think it's gonna be not just like the gap analysis by itself. I think it's gonna be inclusive of all the planning and all the visioning that we've done over the years to bring into, you know, what, what this multicultural center could be.
Okay, and so then when you're suggesting allocating seventy, that's a seventy-five thousand dollars uh, or a one-time funding to initiate an RFP for analytical consulting services, you're, you're looking for a, can you tell me, help me understand what you're looking for?
Yeah, I don't know. Um, I'm looking for who's qualified to do uh, a, a gap analysis. Um, you know, as far as when we put that RFP out, just like any RFP um, to see who's out there who has the um, you know, capacity and the skill set. Also the expertise, you know, to uh, give us a gap analysis. I think that's what's gonna be really important. Uh, I don't think there's like any particular, you know, firm or anything that we're looking for, we're looking for the best qualified, you know, uh, return on that investment.
Okay, um, remind the council, this was direction from you at your retreat that we pursue a gap analysis and a needs assessment so that we can understand what the need is. Uh, so this is Uh, so this isn't, this isn't a recommendation, this is following up on council direction. And seventy-five thousand dollars probably will not cover the cost, we're probably looking at more closer to a hundred or a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Of one-time money, which would be coming from our.
Thank you, um. I guess where I'm going with this is. I'm looking at the financial situation, I'm looking at what we're trying to do, what we're not trying to do. I. Like, I think Beaverton could be a real example for like what, you know. What communities have to have a landing space in the in a multicultural center, right, like? To get services, to get support, to 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 convene, to do these things. I I'm at a point now where I think that. We. I I would wanna support or I would recommend supporting. Uh, doing an RFP to find a partner organization to help us figure out how to get after this work, I don't know that. Given staff capacity, given what we're able to do, what we're not able to do, I understand maybe the direction was in needs analysis. I'd like us to potentially see if we can get the seventy-five thousand dollars out the door to a community-based organization that's doing this work. Um, I think some of my policy goals, I've been pretty clear, are around creating economic prosperity for our communities of color. Um, and other historically excluded communities that aren't um, that are struggling. I don't know, I'm reading the needs and now, like I'm reading a lot of these documents that we've got access to and. I'm just not sure I'm seeing in needs analysis, I actually pulled up um. The homeless presentation from um, the Bloomberg Institute. Um, and I guess, and I'm just gonna read off of one of the slides. Um, a really big area of opportunity was service fragmentation, um, and so our homeless community was saying. There is a fragmentation of services and we can't access them, um, and I think that that is very similar to the immigrant refugee population, it's just a different. Group of people that need different support with those services, so. Like, I think we have the right problem statement, I think we have the right problem approach. I don't know whether our city maybe has the capacity or the ability to do this, um. I often find that sometimes institutions are in the way of getting in the work because. We have sort of a way of how we wanna do it, and so obviously I'd love to hear from others, but. I'd I'd get behind potentially seeing if there was a a community-based organization or a partner organization that. One, we could say, hey, we've got the seventy-five thousand dollars, like what ideas do you have? Um, but but we're not gonna dump you, right, like. Maybe we'll let you drive the car, I actually feel like I used this analogy in our council retreat. Um, you know, maybe you're driving the car and we're sitting in the passenger seat. Um, but we'll partner with you from a state and federal legislative agenda perspective, um. I know I've heard the argument that, you know, we we need a study to show that we need this. Um, we've supported programs where we didn't have studies, right? We knew that there was a pro- a problem with folks experiencing homelessness, we've got a homeless shelter. Um, we felt that this, our business community wanted to do nonprofit incubators. We got money for a nonprofit incubator, so I'd like to see us potentially look into that route. I'd love to hear from other counselors to kind of see where their pulse is at, um, let me, sorry, I'll just consult really quick, um. Like, I think economic prosperity is super important, um, I think. Making sure that we are able to figure out how to get this on the state and federal legislative agenda. I de- and ideally identifying an organization that we're partnering with. Um, I also think if we haven't already, I'd love to make sure that we're engaging with our diversity advisory board members and or. Identifying a board that's kind of helping us get after this work. Um, and oh, I'm sorry, I do have one comment, actually, it's fine, let me, let's just hear from others, I'll I'll. Let some folks speak, thanks.
Counselor Kimmy.
You guys know that I rarely agree with Counselor Hassan. But. But this time I kinda agree with her, um. The uh. Now I was thinking more of, of course, we need. Gap analysis or needs analysis uh, somehow, but I'm just wondering. Should we be on the driver's seat? Uh, well, maybe we can partner up with the local organization. Who has more passion, compassion, who's been there, done that, who knows? What needs to be done? Uh, and it's not gonna be just uh, analysis or the study, but it will be directly involved. Uh, they know what they wanna get out of it. Uh. And then. Who knows what's gonna happen next year or a year after, some of us might not be here, you know, uh, and then priorities might change. When priority changes, the staff directives and our priorities change. So then um. We might not continue the work like what, like like how it it happened years before. So I'd rather have money out the door to the community organizations who will do the work that we will ask them to do. And through an MOU or some agreement that would that. We can ask them to do these kind of things. Um, and I think that has more chance of this being ongoing work and being successful. Than um, us on a driver's seat, um. Yeah, that's my comment.
Yeah, um, counselors, I would like to know, um. Um, do you have any recommendations or feedback, um? If a community-based organization does not have skill set or capacity. Um, to do this, um.
Well, so I would just wanna find out, actually, uh, I don't have a specific organization in mind. But, so then at least we know that, okay, we tried it. There's nothing out there who can do this work, so then. I don't think we're gonna waste too much time on it. Uh. Just, uh, and that's my understanding, so if if what I wanna do. But but if we don't have organizations who's gonna take up this work, then I'm okay with it. At least, at least we tried. But I don't wa- I wanna take a different approach than how it was many years ago. Where it kinda died. So I I don't wanna take that risk. So.
Counselor President.
Thank you, um. Counselors, and I wanna be responsive to your ask, but I'm not fully sure, like. What the ask is. I don't know, like, if I can just ask you to be a little bit more specific, um. Because there's part of me that's like, I don't even know I would ask. An organization to do right now, so I'd love if you could be more specific with what you have in mind.
Sure, I mean. I think that the communities that we're talking about, like, it's. It isn't so different than what you might deal with. I think the difference is is the spaces that you can walk into to get that support. So there are places and spaces that I walk into. And I feel valued and seen, and I feel like I can be myself, and I feel like I can be authentic. And there are places and spaces that I walk into. That I put my shield on, and that I kind of have to to do a bit of a like, okay. I don't always necessarily feel safe here, and so I have to act a certain way, and I and I'm not always gonna be able to be vulnerable with with who I really am, and. I struggle with that, right, that's just, that's who I live every day, and so when we talk about communities of color. They walk into City Hall, and sometimes they don't feel like they can get the help or the support that they need. And so the center is really about creating a space and place. Where you're walking through the door, mayor has given this, uh, what is it, like the first door you walk into, and it's like should be the last door you walk out to get the help you need. Um, so it's it's, you know, we don't want to create that door, and so back to my ask, um. I'm not sure that the city is like, like. Like, as an institution, whether we do it intentionally or not, like we do uphold oppressive systems. Um, I'll give you an example, the Washington County did an. A s- comprehensive co- community-based organization, ARPA Community Engagement. Complex process, if CC's here, she could probably tell you a little bit about it, um, and ultimately the county actually. Um, had to reallocate the funds for um, upgrades to the jail. And so I heard from many community-based organizations who don't know the difference between Washington County and Beaverton. Who are like, we don't really wanna work with y'all again, like you ask and you ask and you ask, and then nothing happens. So my ask to your question, Counsel President. Is, is there a way for us to ask staff to dr- to put together an RFP that's not about a gap analysis particularly? But a more, here we have the seventy-five thousand dollars, here's our problem statement and our approach that we're trying to solve, what ideas do you have, and then? And then hopefully, as we see proposals or see what people have. We're able to be like, okay. Organization X is doing this and they're doing this well, and we are going to. Make state and federal legislative asks, or we're gonna partner with them on a capital campaign to help them to get this going. I don't know that I, that this is a city job, but I think that we can. Partner with an organization to help them, to your earlier point, like what's the city's role in it? Is that, am I answering your question?
I think you are, I think my concern is like from our discussion earlier this year about it. And from some of the examples of, for example, the nonprofit incubator. The way that that funding came to us from state and federal was because we had a gap analysis and a needs assessment. To show them, to to validate. Them investing in Beaverton, right, so.
Did we, sorry, I just, I I never saw one, okay.
I like. That work was done, I'm pretty sure we we were, we ga- were given it. Sometime this calendar year. We were, we received the documentation that was put together to make the ask to our delegations. And so, I'm worried. That. We put this seventy-five K that we've allocated towards a needs assessment and a gap analysis. To do something else. And then we need to invest even more to now go do a gap, uh, now. The two A's are really tripping me up in my vocabulary tonight. That we will just ha- be delaying getting those things done and thus actually delaying getting. The um, ball rolling on getting more resources, because from everything that I've heard this year. Is that those big investments come in when we have like that, like. Sometimes that is the shovel-ready thing, sometimes that is we've really proven out. The use case of this thing as a need in our city, and we've got an approach of how we're going to get after it, so. I I I I I also understand the want to like try to do something differently. But I can't fix how. The federal delegation gives us money, and if they're gonna say I need these documents from the city of Beaverton to say. I'll invest in a multicultural center. Then like we have to in- invest in that to be able to go get it, cuz I don't know how else like. We're gonna go find. The many millions of dollars that we need to build the thing.
Uh, I'm gonna jump in before everyone else goes for a second time here. I feel like we're having the same argument we had in January, and so I wanna make sure of what we're trying to accomplish, what this is a an update in a work session. I'll give my same points. As the person in our building that goes out and gets money. I've already, I I've said this so many times that I don't even wanna continue to argue with it. If we blow the opportunity to get the stuff that we need in place to do the work, to get the money, I don't think we're coming back. And so if we reallocate the seventy-five thousand dollars to do it, I also fear that we will be in a similar situation to Washington County. Which I don't think that. The way that you portrayed that was not the most accurate, I think that's a perception, they didn't just pull this money and only do the jail, there was lots of other things to consider, and I think it was complex. We are in a similar financial situation as the county, so if we do an RFP and say, here's our statement, come back and tell us what you need. We will have no resources to go and help them do it, we don't, and so. Are we going out and creating the same cyclical problem over again that we just watched a partner pitfall and do? I know sometimes it looks really easy to go and get money from the federal and state government, it is not. And I, as the person that does it, I've I've told you guys what I need. Um. I I don't wanna support deviating from what we asked for in January, cuz here we are, what? Eight months later, having the same conversation, and so I I would like us to get the gap analysis done, I think if we leaned in and did the work we needed to do. We'd be on our way already, so. I'm just kind of at a loss, I feel like we're continuing to have the same argument here. Counselor uh, Duggar.
And I was gonna make the same point, like we, it's it's, I don't wanna do it, but we 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 have to do it for federal and state money because we can't pay for it otherwise, and. Yeah, so I I won't belabor the same point, I will ask a point of clarification from from Jenny. Procurement rules. Are pretty set, like we can't just put an RFP out to. Various organizations that are like like. Like, there's pr- pretty specific rules, correct, on who we can send an RFP out to and. And their capabilities, we can't just decide to send that out to anyone, right?
We would need to send it out to qualified um, groups that do this work. Uh, and that would be based on the scope of services and the RFP that's written. Um, you can't handpick or cherry pick folks, we're in. Pretty typical for anything that we do.
Yeah, cuz that, we would wanna avoid conflicts of interest and things like that too, like. Um, so we have to be really careful with that too, but tha- that's my only other point, we just, like there there are policies in place. So I think we have to consider that.
Counselor Teeter.
Yeah, thank you. My. Perspective here is similar to one that I often bring to conversations when we're talking about. Street safety. Or transportation projects where things are so expensive. And takes so long to actually accomplish. And. I often share comments like. Can't we take some? Uh. Temporary improvements to show what the street could be like and learn from those, and that becomes our. Our. Input and. Analysis of the street and what it could be, and then we leverage that to to get more funding or to. Put a plan in our capital improvement program, and so I I think I bring a similar framework for how I'm looking at the multicultural center, and it's. In line with what counselor. Counselors Kimmy and Hassan have said. Where. I think it'd be great if we were able to just. Send out an RFP to an organization. That has a scope of work, says what they're wanting to do, that's in line with the problem statement and problem and approach. Um. And they use that work. To send a report back to us, that's just like a grant report. And that becomes the the analysis of. What the need was, how they addressed it, what the the gaps are and. And. What the need was and and how they addressed it. Um, and then we're, we'd be able to show that to our delegations, state and federal. And say, listen, we've been doing the work, these these organizations have done a great job. They need this much money to keep on going to build on it. Um. I feel like it'd be just a great way to learn. And. I get the analysis that we need while we actually do, or while the community does some of the work. That's where my head is at. Um, looks like it's kind of split overall with where people are standing right now, so I'll just end with that.
And and I guess. How is it any different than what Kenya is suggesting, that we do an RFP, we go out, we ask for, like. I think every. We're arguing from the same point here, so is there something different? Than what Kenya offered to do that you guys are thinking he's not doing, cuz I feel like. What is the difference between what is he his offering, we're gonna go out and search for qualified people to do this work, they're gonna come back with a report, are you suggesting? What is different than what he is suggesting?
He wants to use, I mean, it's for in like consulting, right, to like do more of an analysis, and I think. What's happening again is Counselor Kimmy, now I feel like we're defending. The importance of this project and trying to explain to you that maybe we know what we're talking about when it comes to communities of color, but maybe.
I just wanna interject, I also know of about being a member of a community of color, so.
Thanks, Kenya. Uh, I had a couple of questions, actually, well, actually, I don't know, am I in order?
Yeah, I just, I wanna make sure that we're bringing new information to the conversation as we're trying to move forward, cuz I feel like we're having a cyclical argument here, and there's not. There's not enough votes to deviate from the process of what we're doing, and more is that what we're being asked to do, so. Let's think about how do we move to the next step.
Yeah, so my questions are, um. Can you, or I guess I'd just love to see the needs analysis that was done for the shelter and the nonprofit incubator, cuz I never saw those. Um, I will say, um, I remember speaking to our federal lobbyist, uh, Counselor Kimmy was with me. We talked to him at a at a high level around what the dream was. At no point did he ask for needs analysis, he asked us for some data, which I think we could pull. Um, I've also very gently talked about this concept to state legislators, and that hasn't come up. Obviously, I'm not as experienced in kind of doing some of the. Asking for money, but I guess I'd like some more clarity on that so that I can make sure that where, that we have the right information. I'd really like for, you know, the three counselors who are maybe stuck on the seventy-five K going to consulting services. To come join us to the other side and say that they'll support. Trying to get an organization that wants to do this work and help make it happen.
I'm get. I still feel like I'm lost because Kenya is. Asking basically for the same thing you're asking. What is the difference between what you're asking and what it he has asked us to do? He wants to write an RFP and search for qualified people to do this work, if the groups that pop up, you you could, all those places, people you're talking about. Could apply in the RFP, so like. I'm I'm being in all earnest here, I'm having a hard time seeing the difference between what you're asking for and what Kenya's asking for.
Kenya, I thought when you ta- answered my question, you were talking about community, more focused on community and engagement.
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, when you talked about seventy-five K for consulting services, that it was more around community engagement and committed and completing a needs or gap analysis.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I'm asking for, to do a gap analysis, yes. So.
Um, I I would say I don't believe we need that, so, but y'all can talk about it.
Jessica, could you back us up a slide? To the, um, and this is, yeah, uh, so I think, um. Mayor, to your point about, uh, what is it that we're talking about RFP? Um, I think, uh, I just wanted to get in front of you all again, what Kenya was proposing was. An RFP to. An RFP to conduct a gaps analysis. You both, you both are right, and I'm hearing this um debate about whether instead of doing an RFP for gaps analysis, it should be for. Service provision, creating space, um, that kind of a thing. That it's more about finding the community-based organization to do the work. Um, I know, Mayor, I just heard you say that the direction we are walking right this moment. Is to um conduct that gap analysis. That's the direction we had from council last time. Um, and I'm, I'm hearing the debate on the floor of council. Um, we, staff has the difficult task of trying to walk forward. Through, um, figuring out what the direction of council is. Um, and right now, we do have this gaps analysis in front of us. Um, so I just want to make sure we had, uh, Mayor, to your question about exactly what it is we're talking about in front of us.
And could I also, in my notes, what I'm, um, for, uh, Counselor Hassan. Um, I have a note here saying that you would like a community-based organizations. Community-based organizations to, um, you know, receive this funding, uh, to give us ideas. That's, is that correct? Okay.
Counselor Teter, is this a new one, or did you already go? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm lost in my.
Yeah, this is new.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, so, yeah, to, to clarify a little bit with. I'll speak personally, with what I'm saying versus what I think was being shared in the, in the presentation here is. The action before us is to conduct a gap analysis, purely analytical, purely. Uh, figuring out what's out there in the community, what's happening and what the needs are. And the perspective that I was trying to share was, I think we can do that. Through giving the money to community organizations who can prototype the work and send that in from, or by prototype the work, I mean. Prototype the ideas expressed of the mul- in the multicultural center. And then report that back to us like in a grant report. And that grant, that report back would serve as the analysis of the programming, of the vision. And of the needs that are still out there. So the difference is. Analytical consulting versus. Uh, program implementation and reporting.
Counselor Kimmy.
So. Um. I'm with the Counselor Teter on that, where, um. Well, I don't understand what Mayor's point of view is. Why don't we do just RFP, uh, and then whoever applies. Who, uh. Will get the work done, analysis or whatever that might be. It doesn't have to be formal. Uh, it could be, I mean, it has to be formal, but, um, I like what Counselor Teter was saying, um. I just don't want this to be just purely analytical. Uh, and then this doesn't have to be analytical. And as how we work with the homeless, homeless, uh, we, how we address the homeless situation where was work in progress. Where I think a lot of federal lobbyists or state, or whomever. Uh, we can show the work that the community organization, organization have been doing and collect the data and show the results. Uh, uh, so I, so I just don't want to spend this money on just getting the analytical work. Uh, to know what we already know. So that's the hesitation.
Yeah, I just want to say, I don't think it's been, uh, clearly defined that this would be an analytical process. You know, if, 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 you know, we talk about research, I think this would be a mixed methods process. You know, um, there may be focus groups. Um, all of that is yet to be determined, uh, in the scope of work. You know, and I, and, you know, and, you know, one of the slides that was up, you know, it's just like, how does council want to be involved? You know, I think that's a, that's an ask, um, from me, and I think, you know, maybe helping, uh. Review the RFP, uh, so we can, um, hash, uh, some of this out. But, uh, you know, just to say that, um, there's analytical data, um, I, I, I. I, I, I wouldn't say that would be accurate, because I, I, I think there would be multiple forms of, uh, information that. Um, you know, we have the opportunity to request, um, from whoever, uh, is qualified to, um, you know. Um, see this RFP through and also, uh, deliver in product.
I think. One of the, the themes that I'm, I'm hearing from both Counselor Hassan and, and Counselor Kimmy. Is wanting to get this on the agenda for the state and the federal government, and I, I would say we can do that. We also have a time. So the short session, people only get two bills. There's not enough time for us between now and seven weeks from now. To make this a legislative priority, to convince someone to take this on as a bill, to try to get funding in the short session. So if we're keen up to have this for the long session. The, the things in place that we need are some of the things that we're talking about. I don't, I don't think. We're too far off from what the staff is suggesting and what Counselor Hassan and Counselor Kimmy want us to do. I think that the hiccup is, do we want to spend the seventy-five thousand doll, like? And to be clear, Counselor Hassan is asking from, I'm just recapping here, for us to. Put it out there for ideas to come back. Counselor Kimmy is asking us to do, to start a systems navigator, to get people going on the work. Counselor Teter is saying, I want a combination of both, and I want to empower a local group to do it. So, and what I think we still have is this idea, and what the Equity Officer is telling us, too, is like, we need this gaps. It's not just necessarily for like what's missing, it's also for like what's here and how we're doing things. It's really hard to articulate the problem. We're having a hard time articulating the problem among seven very educated, very involved people. Imagine me as the mayor trying to take this anywhere else and have this conversation about what we're asking for. And so if we want to like throw the game, one, one tonight is a work session, so we're not voting on anything. So let's get our ideas out there, and they're gonna have to come back. If we want this to be a legislative priority as a way to try to get money in, we have time. The thing that we need is, is what I've been asking for from last year. The same reason that you say you want me, you know, you guys know, you understand the community, I raised thirty-three million dollars. I have a sense on how to do this work. Nothing is stopping any organization from going to legislature and making this priority without us. So I don't think seventy-five thousand dollars is gonna make or break anything we do. Um, so I, I guess what we would need more information about is if we're changing courses. This is going to kick the can again. It needs to come back, which we can do. We need to come back with what an RFP might look like, for what the services might look like, and what we're doing. Um, we could bring, or the next option could be, we can ask for a scope, like, have Kenya work on a scope. Haven't, and have something to react to, because we're talking about a lot, a lot of hypotheticals. My suggestion would be, let's let Kenya write a scope, understand what he's doing, and bring that back from council feedback, and we could massage it from there. But there is not consensus anywhere to de- deviate and hire an outside group or to bring us ideas. I still think there's like three things out there that everyone's asking for. Counselor Hassan.
I'll just talk about what I'd like to see in this. I mean, I don't believe that what Counselor Kimmy and Counselor Teter are saying are so different. I think they're similar enough, so I just want to say that for the record. Um, I do feel like, just have to say this, like, it feels like. The counselors of color are telling you what we've heard from our community, and we're asking you to listen, and, and maybe you're not hearing it, and that's, that's fine. But like, this is not our area of expertise, and that's okay. And that's why we should have an organization doing it, because it's not our area of expertise. But I know it because I live it, because I don't get to be safe in spaces all the time, but that's okay, because that's my life. But, and that is the life of a lot of our communities of color. So I just ask you to keep that in mind as you're thinking through this. Like, we're not the expert, like, we just aren't. We really aren't, and that's okay. It's okay to identify an organization that will partner with us. It's okay for us to champion that organization. I don't want to get into the minutia and the weeds of what this, like, the how, right? Like, for me, it's like the what. And so if I'm talking about the what, what I'm asking this to be, and this is for staff, and. This is an example of, of communities having a landing place that is a center for meeting and a center for being together. Um, I was talking to someone who works in immigration and refugee services. She calls it the referral to nowhere. What if the city of Beaverton was a sole organization that partnered with all sorts of organizations to ensure that the referral to nowhere was a space? And that space had education support by partnering with the Beaverton School District, and had healthcare support by partnering with behavioral healthcare partners. Mental health is such a big issue in communities of color, and we don't want to talk about it, and I'm probably one of the first people to say that I don't want to talk about it. There's enough going on in my personal life that, that, that makes me feel a sense of urgency. That communities of color need to talk about their mental health issues. So. Again, this is, I'm being a little imaginative, so please don't hold this against me, like visionary about what I want to see. So don't let one thing make you think that I won't do it if it doesn't have the one thing. Um, you know, support for transportation, support for services, and, and again, if we dream bigger. Workforce development, you know, employment opportunities, courses. Um, according to someone I know, a hundred and thirteen thousand people are eligible right now to apply for the US citizenship. What if we were helping some of those, those folks, specifically folks that we, that live in the city of Beaverton? There's no shortage of organizations, ASEAN, the Beyond the Star, Wake Up Beaverton, Unite Oregon, they're doing this work, they know how to do this work. This is not our area of expertise, and we should not ask about whether this is our area of expertise. I think, especially after reading the Coalition of Communities of Color report, the Leading With, Leading With Justice. They had a racial equity report, the Downtown Equity Report, our DEI Plan. Having had some conversations with the Diversity Advisory Board, I see some really great opportunity there. Policy goals that I have in mind are for us to create economic prosperity for communities of color and historically suited communities. Um, and ensure that a hub that can have support around housing, food, healthcare, and ultimately evolve to what I've mentioned, which is workforce development. And employment. Um. Like, I, when I talk about this, I'm talking about my lived experience, of the lived experiences of folks that I know and the folks that I, that I work with all the time. So it's not coming from, you know, some personal interest of my, of my own. And so when I think of the what, that is the what. Uh, the other thing I'll mention, first half, um, I know that, uh, the school district is, uh. I don't know what they're exploring, but there's been conversations around some sort of support for families and students. Um, I also know that the, um. I don't know what it's called anymore, but there was a governor's office for immigrant and refugee, uh, communities. They've shored off into a different group, but there is a lot of, um. Big policy conversations that are happening to support immigrant and refugees, and those policy decisions that are being made are coming with a lot of money. Um, there's a eleven fifteen waiver that's gonna allow community-based organizations to do a lot of work to help, uh, specifically refugee communities. So we just need to say yes, and then I'm telling you that, like, all the right people are gonna show up. Because I've talked to a lot of them, and they're super excited to potentially.
All right, Kenya, do you have what you need from council?
Uh, yeah, just, um, how would council, um, like to be involved? I think that's still, um, out there and really important, uh, for me to know. I, I've heard, I've heard, you know, many opinions, but as far as just involvement, level of involvement, I think that's really important.
Counselor Teter.
Yeah, Kenya, if, as you're moving forward with this, and as you are thinking about organizations or groups of people to contact. I'm happy to give as many references and connections as I can think of, just within the community. Um. And I just went blank. That's a good start.
And I think part of the next steps to, um, can, um, chime in here, too, is, um. I'm hearing that there are a couple of things that you might want us to marry a little bit in this. Um, around the analysis and service provision. Um, I think it may help if we, um, were to really outline what it's gonna take to get us to the finish line for the next legislative session. Just so that everybody can really see that, um, really clearly. Um, and what those pieces are that we need to have in place to be successful in legislative sessions. Kenya and I can take that away as a, as a list of, uh, something for our to-do list. Um, so just know that we'll, I think, take this away and, and come back with, um. RFP, uh, and probably the, the path to the legislative session. Kenya, is there anything else you see here as next steps?
Oh, no, I think that, I think that's a great start, you know, but I also feel like, you know, even just, um, you know, giving that a little bit more, uh, research thought. In process, and wha- what does it take? You know, I heard some mixed, um. Mixed, uh, opinions on what, what it takes, you know, really to qualify, or what may be an ask if we go that route. So I want to get some clarity on that to make sure that, you know, we, we are prepared. If, if we do go down that avenue.
Counselor Kimmy.
Yeah, on the, uh, agenda, you mentioned that, um, uh, I, I would just love to get more one-on-ones. Uh, when you do monthly one-on-ones, get more updates on that, if possible. So, so I know, um, what's happening more frequently than to wait six, nine months to get an update. And, and I, I just don't have enough time for that, so, uh, and I'll just give, give my feedback whenever, uh, you have a question. Thanks.
Counselor Hassan.
Yeah, um, I just comment, I know it says the gap analysis, if that's the route you go, will take six to nine months. I'd like that to be. Three to six, if it's possible. I know that's a big ask, but if that's something that we could do. Um, I will say that all the reading that I did in the last seventy-two hours made me feel like I could pull up a gap analysis for y'all. Um, I would like Jenny, if it's possible, to get, I'd love to see the needs analysis that we did on the two other federal projects. So the nonprofit incubator and the homeless shelter. Um, and. I don't know that I can navigate Counselor Kimmy's monthly requests, but I do, would like to stay closer to this, just as a community of color that folks are coming to a lot of questions.
Um, just to respond to your work request for a timeline, um, that would require other things to not happen. So if that's the pleasure of the council, I'll bring back a work plan of what would drop off in order for me to meet that type of timeline. Um, we have a lot of other competing projects, and so I have great concerns about, about speeding things up. Because, um, you're gonna have a retreat, and you'll have an opportunity to actually hear some of the competing issues. So, uh, perhaps, um, we have that conversation first, and then we can stick with the pleasure of the council.
Okay, I think what you hear from council is, uh, this is an issue everyone wants to be involved in. So perhaps, um, uh, an IUI update and the mechanism of things that are already coming to us. I think we're interested in this continuing to move forward, and so, um, giving us some kind of whatever cadence you think is appropriate, report level. So we understand, you know, everyone's responsible to their constituent base to report on how we're doing things. And so I'll leave that to you to come back and, and tell us, um, what's the best way for you to communicate with us. Um, you know, I think, uh, as we move forward with the retreat and how we compete against everything else in our timeline. I think this, uh, will be a great time for us to talk about it, and I think the city manager is gonna owe us a work plan coming out of it. Or at least an updated version of what you've already done, and understand where we're at, not just on this, but other things. So, uh, with that, I look forward to seeing everyone next week. That's the end of our agenda this evening. So, all right, friends, we will see everyone next week.